This is a special budget work session for the upcoming budget. Like everyone to stand and please pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reliable which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the robe?
Linda Avanzato, here. Melvoid Benson.
Yeah.
Larry Cerisi.
Yeah.
William Mudge.
Present.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Joe Thompson.
Here.
Richard Welsh.
Here.
Julia Hells. Brenton Bowley, student representative.
Here.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, Mrs. Benson.
The request I have is that each of us would take a moment, each in our own way, to say a moment of silence about one of the greatest outstanding teachers within our school system, a great civic leader, Mr. Francis Kane, I won't vote any further, who passed this morning. He and his wife both were outstanding teachers in North Kingstown. And he was, I won't be there to tell, but let us all stand in our heads and remember Sir Francis Kane.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson. You probably know better than I do, Mrs. Benson. It's my recollection that Frank Kane, while he was a teacher here and the coach for the tennis team for years, he was also very instrumental in raising a lot of money for scholarships for North Kingstown school students for what seems like forever.
Well, he had a project, and there was a letter in the standard this fall when they gave the number of scholarships. And they had an auction each Saturday, and the money would go to scholarships for the students. And it numbered way over the hundreds. And it was scholarships for our students.
His passing is surely a loss for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson, for bringing that to our attention. The next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If someone has any comments, we have 15 minutes set aside. Please limit your comments to school committee business, and three minutes, please. Mr. August.
Thank you, Richard J. August. I'm a member of the town audit committee, and I act as the step body's liaison to the school committee. Mr. Chairman, those of you who were on the committee last year may recall that around this time last year and a little bit into the spring, there was a discussion regarding some of the information that was being reported in the town's comprehensive annual financial report specifically with respect to the number of employees in the school department and also on the number of students enrolled. You may recall that I pointed out at a meeting that the information included, contained in this did not jive with numbers that were being spoken about in public session by Mr. Cerisi, then Chairman Cerisi, and Superintendent Thornton. We, being Mr. Cerisi, Superintendent Thornton, and myself, met to discuss the situation. And it was unclear where the information was coming from. Now, I want to point out that this is unaudited financial information, so it's not the auditor's responsibility to collect and verify the information. In the statistical section, they rely on the information provided not only by the school department, but by the municipal government, the pre-library, the water department, and the recreational fund, Fons at Davisville. We could not determine the source of this information. And with the help of the auditors, we determined that, because the former controller had left, but we did determine that the information that was contained in the reports were provided by the Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Gardner. I met with Superintendent Thornton and Chairman Cerisi to go over this information and try to figure out what is the discrepancy. And it wasn't just a discrepancy for one year, but we went back several years. With respect to the student enrollment, Dr. Thornton said he believed that those numbers were the figures that were reported to RIDE, and they would be as of October 1st. But we could not determine, you know, what was the basis for the headcount numbers. I suggested at that meeting that rather than try to pick a point in time, it would be better to use an average. A simple two-point average would be better than pulling a number at some point in the year, and nobody knew where it was from. And I said, take the headcount at the beginning of the year, and it's broken down between faculty, support, and central administration, the same number at the end of the year, and display it, and say that it is a two-point average or an average as of the beginning and the end of each year. And because this is unaudited information, that it would be perfectly acceptable to go back and review the last nine years and correct that information. And the same could be, would be held true for the headcount. The enrollment could be done the same way with a two-point average as of the beginning and the end of the year. I mean, if you wanted to be more precise, you could do a four-point average, but better than just saying, okay, as of October 1st, this is it. And then we get into discussions about what's the number of students, and therefore what's the average cost of educating a student and so forth. At that meeting, it was agreed that this information would be corrected, and going forward, that there would be a lot of due diligence so that there wouldn't be errors going forward. The audit committee met with the auditors about a month ago, and they presented their draft financial, their draft financial report. And at that time, there was no statistical information from the school department, because there was, there's an overwhelming workload here with regard to a uniform chart of accounts that RIDE keeps fooling around with. We said, okay, fine. When the final report is ready, you know, we'll look at it. Yesterday, after another meeting, I was going by Town Hall and picked up my copy, audit committee copy, of Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And lo and behold, none of the numbers have changed. They're exactly the same. I don't know about this year, but going, the historical information was not corrected. Now, one of the other recommendations that was made by the audit committee to the auditors was that the superintendent and director of administration would be required to sign the representation letter, just as the town manager and the director of finance is, which basically says that they recognize that this information is theirs, and that what they're providing to the auditors is a true and accurate representation of what's happening. Bring this to your attention, because, Mr. Welsh, you will recall you attended an audit committee meeting last year, at which time you were somewhat critical of the audit committee and the role it played in the community. I feel that the audit committee and the person and myself went out and extended ourselves and tried to come to some conclusion. I believe that agreement was reached, but it doesn't seem to be followed through. And I intend to talk to the auditors. I just spoke to Superintendent Mr. Draper to try to find out, was there something that happened subsequent to that? I will speak to the auditors about that, because I said I just picked this up and got a chance to go through it.
Say, Mr. August, that the school committee, I never saw the audit till it was done very recently. We never, we don't see those numbers ahead of time.
Well, what I'm saying is, I didn't see, I didn't see the final report myself until yesterday.
Right.
But you will recall the discussion we had at several meetings last year about this.
And about the town FTEs as well.
And the town FTEs as well. But, you know, I, we're not here to discuss the town FTEs. I'm bringing to your attention a situation that, you know, has to do with the school department. I think if, I mean, the point is, if people are going to look at this and draw conclusions about what's going on in the school department and basic data is in question, and...
Excuse me. This is not Q and A, this is citizens' comments.
Right.
So, once, excuse me. Once Mr. August is done, then we'll continue on with the agenda. But this is not Q and A, Mr. Mudge.
Excuse me. The statute says that you can ask, or he can ask, under comment, okay? Any question to this committee, whether you believe that or not, okay? I would ask the lawyer, okay? Public comments are public comments, and they can ask any one of us a question, and correspondingly, we can ask them a question. Okay? So...
That's, that's true if it's advertised as an open forum, not, not just under a citizen's comment. If it's advertised as an open forum, you can have discussion back and forth.
It's on the agenda.
As citizens' comments, not as an open forum. Now, you asked for the legal opinion, and you have it. Thank you. Mrs. Benson.
This is the latest, and I have tonight to ask the committee and see if you agree that we get someone from the Attorney General's office to come down and give us a workshop. It was in the paper about two weeks ago, and I secured this copy, and I'm sure you have it. And it states very clearly, "A committee may question during time, but you cannot take action." So, according to the newest rules concerning access to public records and open meeting, this is it. And if you care, I...
Thank you.
If you care to look at it, this is from Attorney General...
Not, not at this time, but later, yes.
Jill Martin.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Mr. Mudge.
You also have the prerogative of allowing discussion with Mr. August, especially that he is a representative of the audit committee. There's nothing to preclude you from authorizing a further discussion on this. Nothing.
That may, that may be, Mr. Mudge.
Yeah.
We have something very important to attend to this evening. We can attend to Mr. August's comments at our next meeting. We have to get to this budget. This budget has to be done tonight in order to get, by ordinance, the budget to the town council. So, if Mr. August doesn't mind, we'll take your, commit your comments under advisement, and we will have a response for you from the superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always talk to you after the story.
I do have a question, and I'll ask you. It does relate to the budget, and as we're going to get into discussions, people are going to say, well, how much money can we save here and there in the bud, for the budget? And my question is, if numbers that are referred to here had anything to do with the numbers for the Jamestown number that we voted on when I first came on the board, if there is money to be saved, or, you know, more money to come into the town of North Kingstown as a result of figures that have been referenced here just now, I think it's germane to, to future discussions that might take place tonight about the budget. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would also say that that discussion is germane to the '012 budget, because indeed, if you look at page eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, you see the same problems. None of the data adds up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Okay? So, that's going to be discussion on the budget, and...
Okay. All right. Then we'll do it under budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else for citizens' comments? Okay, then we'll move on on our agenda.
I'm a parent of a student here. I'm a taxpayer in North Kingstown, and I'm also a custodian in your building here. Just want to say a couple of things. I know you guys are looking to quote whatever the term is, outsource us. It's been a thorn in our side for the last two years, and again, for these two years. Ten years I've been with you guys. Don't you feel that you're best people to ask as far as how to cut the budget, how to maintain the budget, how to cut whatever you want to cut out of the custodians? Because maybe the custodians themselves, ten years, nobody's come to me, sat down with me, and said, hey, how can we streamline this? How can we make it better? Not only are you indignant that way, but now you're saying you're outsourcing us, or you're suggesting you might want to outsource us. What do you think that does to the morale? Why aren't you even coming to us first and asking our opinion on, hey, whether it's a concession, I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking about, how can you make the system better? You've got 39 people out here that have been working in your buildings. Who knows them better? We're not a liability. We're an asset to you. Keep that in mind. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
May I ask Mr. Romano a question?
Citizens' comments.
I think I read it to you in the latest book where we could ask a question.
We, we have an opinion from our attorney. It's not an open forum.
I'm sure he's not going to counteract this.
You could make an exception.
We're going to move on, because I want to get this budget done.
Well, Mr. Romano plays a very important figure in the budget.
Thank you.
And I would like to be able to ask him a question.
Okay.
What is your opinion, attorney?
Again, as I stated before, when you advertise under, and I don't have the statute in front of me, the open forum or public forum, there can be a dialogue back and forth.
That's all I want.
But, but what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is, what I'm looking at under this agenda, there's nothing advertised under open forum. There's a citizen's comment, but what the Attorney General has said is, when the school committee engages in a discussion with someone during citizen's comment, what you have is the school committee as a body discussing a matter that was not posted on the agenda, and therefore can violate the Open Meetings Act.
I think the Attorney General said, sir, as long as there's not three people or a forum that enters into that discussion, so if it's less than four people, then you can discuss that.
My advice to you would be not to have the discussion.
Understand, but am I correct? If it's less than three people...
If you get, if it's a qua, if the body itself makes the, if it's a quorum, and it engages in a discussion, then it's a violation.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, the discussion is, if three people, or just one person asks a question, that's permissible. That's what the Attorney General said.
In and of itself, that would not be a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
That's correct. So, Mrs. Benson could ask a question, and I could ask a question.
Except you have a quorum here.
No, no. It had, that doesn't have anything to do with the quorum seating.
All right. We're going to move on, okay?
Before we move on...
So, make note that that's a violation, okay, of the OMA Act.
And before we move on, I would like for the record to, to show that I disagree with the attorney, because I won't, I will speak with you, and I think you understand my disagreement. Because this is the latest issue from our new Attorney General, who's only been in office roughly 45 days, and he spells it out succinctly, that in open forum, a citizen's comments, I think we are tied up on semantics. You're taking citizen comments and an open forum. So, we need to get that straight. And as an attorney for the school committee, I would ask that you would send me a letter without going any further, and copies to each member of the school committee explaining the semantics between open forum and citizen's comments. Thank you.
I'd be happy to say.
Yes.
Well, I would hope you do. That's part of the salary.
Okay. Moving on, I'm going to go right to the 2011, 2012 school budget, so that we can get, make sure that we get this covered. And I'd like to start with Superintendent Dr. Thornton.
Sure. We had a budget subcommittee meeting this morning, and from that, we did have some ideas which I think will be presented tonight. With that, I will defer my further comments to the chair of the subcommittee, Mrs. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. We had a very productive budget meeting this morning, and our secretary, Mrs. Page, Committee Woman Page, will be in a position to give you some of the suggestions. And we came together at the end, if I'm wrong, would you correct me from the minutes?
Yes.
That we would recommend two budgets.
That is correct.
We would have two budgets, one with a zero increase, and the other...
It wasn't quite 2 percent, but it was almost.
Almost 2 percent. And what was driven by that is maintaining a payable track tax rate, and note that I say payable tax rate for the citizens of the town, and to offer a well-planned education for the students of our town. And make sure, for less of a better word than my semantics, but we want to ensure that we are following the BEP, which is known as the Basic Education Prescription.
Right.
Our plan, okay? And we have all of those things in it. And if you wouldn't mind, would you mind giving them the two figures that we came up with, so that we can get a recommendation of acceptance or rejection from the committee?
Yes. On the superintendent's recommended, recommended budget, the thing that our subcommittee specifically talked about was that we were concerned, that we wanted things to follow, to make sure that we were on the increase in our kneecap scores. And since they had just come out, that was the thing that we saw as being one, a very educationally sound plan to make sure that we were working towards getting our scores up. And so, when we looked, asked the superintendent about which items he was recommending were specifically, could be correlated with the kneecap, we said number two, number four, number nine, number 11, and number 12. The further conversation that we had is, we realized that number seven was going to be something that we were going to need, because it was a special education requirement.
Excuse me, Ken, what are you referring to?
This.
Yes.
Yes.
Line to it?
Correct.
Okay. What were they again, please? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll give them again. They were number two, number four, number six, I'm sorry, not number six, I'll get to that later, number nine, number 11, and number 12. Now, in a further conversation, we said that number seven was required for a special education plan, and so that was why we would keep that in there. Which then, of the other ones that are there, we also talked about number three and number six, specifically because one of the things that this committee has spoken to when we had Electric Boat here last time, was there a lot of concern about doing vocational training in the, the high school. And we saw the number of students who go out to do, have work-study programs, that number three, I'm, yeah, number, I'm sorry, number three and number six, if I said two, I'm sorry, number three and number six were directly related to the vocational program and having students go out, and so that's why they were needed. We also discussed in our budgetary planning, our budget subcommittee, about the merit pay, and one of the things we said is, that is currently in the budget for $35,000, and our recommendation was to take that down to $15,000, which then brought the final...
Where was that?
That is not on this page. It was not a superintendent recommendation. Our, our thought on that matter was that other years, we had not had everyone going up by 1 percent. We had had various members who were, had, at different rotations, had taken a 0 percent. But this year, everyone would be increased by 1 percent, and so therefore, we suggested that if we needed to find a little bit more money, that that was a place to take it. As I said, that was not necessarily the superintendent's recommendation. So, what that came down to, oh, and then the other two things we recommended is that Dr. Thornton stated that there was a possibility that if we looked at taking out two elementary school teachers, that our numbers were such that we could possibly cut two elementary school teachers, and so that was another $130,000 that we could be saving there. Those combined with the numbers that I've read off would basically take us a little bit over by $40,116. And that was what we recommended to the superintendent for the increase. So, as I said, that wasn't quite a 2 percent increase, but that was our first recommendation.
So, can I stop you for a moment?
Yes.
All right. So, looking at the 2 percent, I think we're showing originally 293,116. And from that, you're going to take $130,000, $140,000, is that what you're saying?
No, we didn't, I mean, obviously, obviously, the breakage would still be in there. But we, we took out the, the number one, the number 13, and the number 14.
And number six. I meant number five.
Uh, yeah, well, the superintendent's already taken that out of his number. The superintendent has taken out number five, number eight, number 10, that he's not recommending those anymore.
Okay.
And they, because they say removed.
Okay.
I beg your pardon, but...
And 13 and 14, right?
Excuse me? Yes, I'll read those again. The numbers, the superintendent has removed are number six, number eight, and number 10. He is no longer making that recommendation. We would count the breakage, that's number 15, and I didn't read that off, but that was our recommendation to keep with the breakage number.
And so, what, so you've got, you're saying a little bit less than a 2 percent increase at that? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I did not go through and figure out what the percentage would be, and actually, I, we didn't ask at the meeting for Mr. Draper to figure that out either.
If you want to give Mr. Draper a few minutes, we could certainly go through that list and get a number for you. That's what we need to do tonight, so...
Okay. So, that's your 2 percent recommendation, then?
Well, as I said, it's not quite 2 percent.
Not quite.
It's, right.
So...
Okay. So, do we have any questions at this point in time on what you've said?
As the chairman of the committee, I will accept Dr. Thornton's idea that we wait until Mr. Draper can figure that out, and then we, and all the members, and the public will have the correct figures. Because in the meeting, I stated several times, we want to see a budget that instead of the community on one side saying too much, that we can convince the people of this town how valuable education is, and they will be working with us to see the value. That's why the secretary mentioned the kneecap scores. So, we'll wait, take a three-minute pause, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
Well, the superintendent had something that he wanted to say, is that okay?
Sure.
Just for number 13...
We worked together good this morning.
Number 13 and 14, if Mr. Draper could help clarify, I want to make sure the committee knows what they're doing with 13 and 14. Ned, for 13 and 14, if you could just, um, 13 and 14, could you, I'll give a little clarity on those for the committee? If they remove those, what that means? They have no impact on, on the budget. They've been moved to the special revenue section. We just wanted to clarify that those are no longer general revenue items.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we were aware of that in our budget committee, so that was one of the reasons why we just didn't bother mentioning those.
Well, they're, they're being transferred, they were in the budget previously, at least, what, 13?
What are you talking about?
14.
13 and 14, we combined them together.
Well, yeah, so they will no longer be in the enterprise account.
They, they will actually no longer be in the general fund account.
They won't?
They, they were in the general fund, athletic gate receipts and rental incomes were in the general fund this year.
Yeah.
Fiscal year 11. They'll move down to special revenue accounts.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can we talk about that while we're on?
It's a YOCA designation.
Yeah, well, I, I don't particularly care about YOCA, and it isn't, in this... Yeah, well, I don't particularly care about YOCA in this, in this sense. If you look at the Department of Education and YOCA data, you'll find that the athletic gate receipts and the rentals of property are not qualified as enterprise funds. They are funds that we receive because we run a football program and we get the receipts back. That money should be in the general fund. Doesn't qualify for an enterprise fund. And I think you could go to the green book, which I've given to everybody, the Department of Education's Handbook on Accounting and Budgeting Practices, you'll see that that's true. So, I would suggest that that $77,000 go back up into the revenue line item and not okay the enterprise fund. Again, it's my understanding enterprise fund is like a cafeteria. You're given a service, you're getting ones that come back, it should be net zero, okay? And you don't have this relationship with the gate receipts or the revenues for the building.
Mr. Mudge, the superintendent wanted to address that.
Thank you.
I do understand the point Mr. Mudge is making, however, Wright has indicated to us YOCA dictates they do go in the locations Mr. Draper has referenced.
So you're saying that Wright has said that they are enterprise fund accounts?
Not enterprise, they're restricted revenue accounts.
I don't care where they're at there. Well, they're not enterprise fund accounts. Now, they could be a restricted revenue up above where they're at, okay? As a revenue, just like the Jamestown revenue, okay? It could be a revenue, but it's not going to be, cannot be in the enterprise fund accounts.
They would not be in enterprise, that is correct. They, however, would not be where Jamestown is because Jamestown is a general fund account.
Mr. Draper, this is the budget for the North Kingston taxpayers and anybody else, okay? That is a revenue, okay? And it should be in our revenue stream. Our budget presentation to the town has nothing to do essentially with the revenues, okay? In terms of the state laws. We have a town charter that says we'll show all our revenues where they should be in the budget. And the appropriate place for this $87,000, or 70, whatever it is, okay? Is in the revenue stream that we report to the town of North Kingston.
Mrs. Page?
While Mr. Draper is filling this out, I mean, I'm not filling this out, sorry, is figuring out. What I'd like to point out to the committee is what the budget committee has done essentially is that we are only talking about adding on to the budget $20,011, $20,116. And that this is, because we're adding in the two teacher cuts and we're at, we're taking out, we're dropping down the merit pay, the proposals that Dr. Thornton is adding are balanced out with the two cuts that we have here. And so that's one of the reasons why I want to say this is really not very far over the budget we proposed. If you want to go to the 0% cuts, we didn't propose that you took those out because again, all of our suggestions that Dr. Thornton had made, we thought were very much tied into the kneecap, or the vocational trends. The only two that were a little bit not directly to the kneecap were the Aspen program. But as Dr. Thornton was talking, he was telling us how that will very much help us to work towards the kneecap. So they have a lesser of a correlation, but they still have somewhat of a correlation. And that was why we suggested that he keep those two in. To get to the 0%,
Excuse me, Mrs. Page. I don't know if we should talk about any questions we have on the two before we go on to the 0%?
I can explain it quickly, it just gives Mr. Draper a little more time.
Okay.
To get to the 0%, one of the things we said is that we would keep the suggestions we had above because that's still just $20,116 over. We did not suggest that we try to balance the cafeteria fund because we still think we're getting good quality there, we didn't think that was going to be something. So if you add that $64,000 in with the $20,000, you're going to now get $84,000. We suggested that that be taken out of the fund balance, since we do have over a million dollars in fund balance. Now, that then leaves that we're counting on getting $448,000 through negotiations. At the time of the budget meeting, we said that what we would do is if we got that, all that in negotiations, great. However, if we don't get that in negotiations, or whatever we don't get, that would then be a fund balance. So there is the possibility of by taking the 0% budget, that you're taking approximately, I mean, just a ballpark figure of a half a million dollars out of the fund balance. So to get to 0. So that's what I want everybody to know. But I think that that has to be a conversation that we have. It may be something, since we know that probably the town is going to be taking out of their fund balance, that they will be, might be asking us to do the same. And so that was why the suggestion was to submit the two budgets, the 0%, knowing full well that that was going to be a lot of fund balance we were going to be taking out. But we were still advocating for the programs. And I will say, the programs that we're advocating for, none of them are adding any sort of a full-time. They're all .2s and that sort of thing. So in the long run, that will not be increasing some of our long-term pay in terms of our benefits, I guess unless maybe somebody's bumped up. So those were our thoughts. Now, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions of the minutes I took.
Mrs. Benson?
One thing I would like to point out to the members and to the public that all the recommendations were made with the focal point being to satisfy and to stay in compliance with the BEP. The BEP is, for those of you in the audience, like a canoe and the oar. The school department is the canoe, but the BEP is the oar. And in order to go on with education, we have to have the BEP. But one thing I would like to point out, and we were talking about it, is that state law, and I'm beginning to learn that federal law with so many cases, with so many cases against the federal government, there's always a little hole where you can pull in or pull out. And the one hole that the BEP doesn't address is transportation. So we assumed, and I will refer to the attorney for the semantics of the right word for that, that if the BEP is child-centered, in which we are child-centered, that transportation would probably be the right arm of the BEP. Because unless they get to school and get back home, we have no students. So that is the point that I was trying to make when I said, and when I announced to you, that the BEP leaves a little bit for us to think what is important for the basic education prescription. And transportation, we didn't hit the cleanliness issue. But we all know that cleanliness is next to godliness. And in this day and age, with so many different viruses, bugs, and all of those things, that our schools must be clean. Thank you.
Mrs. Avicario?
I have a couple of questions, Kim, just clarification. I didn't really hear, I kind of made marks, but what was number six? Where was that? Where did you end up with that?
We said that the number three and number six, we saw that as both going towards vocational education of our students because as part of having the career supervisor, and actually Director Thornton can talk about this better than I can, but as part of having the career supervisors, there may be less students who are able to go out on work-study next year. And so if we have to pull those students back into the district, we will need to make sure that we have a .2 of a business teacher at the high school.
Is there something else?
I was just going to comment that I think that there's some good suggestions that the budget subcommittee has made. I definitely agree with keeping in some of these ads that Dr. Thornton has identified particularly as being related, as Mrs. Benson says, to the BEP. There's a couple of places where I differ with you. I don't know, and I'd like to hear more from Dr. Thornton about the late bus in terms of its connection. That would be one thing that I would look at cutting. The other thing that I would be.
That is cut. Dr. Thornton has cut that.
Okay, right, but you're recommending that it be included?
No.
No, it's not included.
All right, I misunderstood that then. Okay, and how about number three? Included in your?
That was included because that is the internships coordinator. And right now, we're not in compliance with the internship program.
I have a comment to make on that. I think that that item regarding a director's salary really is a separate conversation and should not be in the budget as an increase in salary because that individual's under contract. And I would think that would be a separate agenda item for us to discuss whether there's an increase of that size. I just.
We were. I will refer to Dr. Thornton. But his idea was that that person was already under contract. Would you mind explaining that?
We currently have this program, have had it for many, many years. The difficulty was, we were paying for it with what's called Perkins money. And our new principal correctly identified that that's a violation. So we are correcting the violation in paying for it the appropriate way.
So it's not an increase, it's just putting it in a different category?
Putting it in the correct location. We can't use Perkins' fund if it's a violation.
Was there anything else, Mrs. Avicario?
Well, on the sheet, it says increase in the director's salary, that's contrary to what? Am I in the wrong spot?
The new sheet?
If you look, if you look at number three, the salary is still the same.
Hey, that would help.
Uh, the salary is still the same.
I'm looking at the wrong sheet, so.
Okay.
So we're now on the same page?
Now we're on the same page.
Mr. Draper, do you have the tally worked up?
Yes, if I'm understanding correctly, it's $150,000 is the overall increase to the budget using those items? You get $150,116.
And what percentage of that was?
That equates to if that amount of increase is applied to only the tax side. So in other words, we're coming down roughly $150,000 from our original request. And we reduce that from our tax appropriation, I get 1.6% as the tax increase.
That is the line that we were looking for. What is the basic tax increase or decrease for the citizens?
The, that goes from a tax request initially of $868,417 to $718,417.
And what percentage of decrease is that?
It's roughly a 1.6% increase in tax support.
Could you give that bottom number again, I'm sorry, Mr. Draper?
Because you're kind of, kind of going to be, and we want to know.
Mr. Thornton, Dr. Thornton?
Just in terms of what I would advise you, in my position where I sit, if you were to make some reductions, I think it would be prudent to put that towards your fund balance prior to the tax support. As you are the school committee, your first charge is to the school district. I would think you would want to lower your fund balance a bit rather than lowering the tax. Both worthy causes, but I would say a fund balance of 1.1 million is a sizable number. If you could knock it down to, say, 900 or 850, I think that's more advisable, in my opinion.
Thank you. Mrs. Avicario? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe's next.
No, go ahead.
Please go.
Joe, go ahead.
I came in with the, with a thing called an agenda reporting form that had, that I thought we were going to vote on. And this only lists one number that I believe we're going to vote to approve or disapprove. And then when I came in, what I think I'm hearing is that that number itself has changed. And that you're also asking for a second number to be submitted over to the town council, which would represent a level funding submission, neither increasing nor decreasing taxpayer support. And so my question is, what are those two numbers that you're recommending? What's the first number that would be the superintendent's budget submission? If not on this sheet of paper, this was something I was given for tonight's meeting. And it said $58,960,460. Is that still the right number?
It is as of the close.
That is my superintendent's recommended number. Now, the budget subcommittee is currently putting out ideas how they might modify that. That's my number to you. Tonight, it becomes the school committee's or school district's budget once you finish. So that's my number, 58. Thank you. Once you finish your work, that's the new number.
The new number.
Is what?
Includes all of the recommendations that we made at the committee meeting this morning, which was the number of.
I think the new number was supposed to be $58,742,960.
Which is the same. Repeat your number, Dr. Thornton, we recommend 58.
My number is a number on the big sheet. 58,960,460. From that, Mr. Draper has just done a calculation for you on what you've been talking about earlier. Draper, can you please, Ned, can you please just rephrase?
Don't let a funny thing happen on the way from the farm, as to what happened when we left the committee.
Mr. Draper? If I'm understanding correctly, the new number I get is 58,817,460.
58.
58.
817.
Does that agree with what you have, Mrs. Page?
No. No, because I had, I took your number, your 58,960,460, and I took out of there 130 for the two teachers. I took out the.
I'm missing the two teachers, that's where I'm.
Okay. Because I was going to say, I took out the social worker. And then I also took out the $20,000 from the merit pay. Those are the four items I took out.
I did not have the two teachers.
I knew something had changed.
Just a moment, please. Mr. Cerisi had his hand up first. Mr. Cerisi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things I'm just looking for clarification on. Out of that recommendation from the budget subcommittee, the $58,742,960, how much are we relying on fund balance for that amount?
I don't think there's anything relying on fund balance. I think that's, that's asking the town council for an increase. Am I correct, Superintendent?
In current model, we have, if you look up top, we're $1,154,791 in fund balance. That's my model. Now, if I'm hearing this correctly, and wrong, please correct me, we're making some reductions off my green section, if you will, and applying that towards local tax support. So to me, it's the same fund balance number of 1154,791, now with a lower tax number of 1.6%. So we shaved some money off and we're just lowering the tax number a bit. That's what I'm hearing, it's still 1-1.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Cerisi still has the floor?
So, Dr. Thornton, if I'm understanding correctly, we're going to be utilizing 1.1, $1,154,791,000 from fund balance for this budget?
That's what the current polls is right now from the budget subcommittee.
Okay. That was one point of clarification I was looking for. The second one I was looking for is not so much of a mathematical, but more of a philosophical. I know, Dr. Thornton, when you proposed your first original budget back in January, we had modeled, you had modeled an additional two social workers. And then it looks like a possible, another possible cut in state aid. You had proposed a second model, which would only add one social worker. And I believe what I'm hearing from the budget subcommittee's recommendation is to eliminate that one social worker, which would mean obviously that we're not adding any social workers. My concern is, if you remember correctly, over the past year, the committee and the school administration had several very concerning student disciplinary matters come before us in executive session, which obviously I. us in executive session, which obviously I'm not going to get into the details. But I think there was some concern on behalf, on the part of committee members, and certainly on the part of the school administration, and I know part of the discussion we had was that there was a need for some social workers in the district to assist these students that seemed to be falling through the cracks or having some troubles between school and home. And I know that was very much of a concern to the committee members. So, I'm just kind of, I'm kind of concerned on where we are at this point in comparison to where we were at that point. As far as what, you know, the need in-
From where I sit?
From where you sit, as far as the need in the district.
From where I sit, I still advocate for it. If you think back, you know, we did have the comparison I gave you of other comparable districts. As you said, we are seeing more students in need. We have an increasing population of kids at the K-five level who have substantial issues that require social work assistance. So, I would still advocate for the one.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Mrs. Benson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mudge first.
Okay.
Dr. Thornton, to try to simplify this, because I, there were a lot of things going on here. You originally proposed fifty-nine million, two twenty-one, roughly, right? And I understand that today you're proposing fifty-eight million, nine sixty. You are. So, that gives us essentially a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar decrease since your original budget appropriation of the present-
Yes, sir.
Getting what the committee did. Okay. So, in terms of that, you're expecting that that's what the tax, the taxes would be reduced by? The, the amount of revenue that we were, you know, requesting before?
My revenue reduction, that two five seven to me goes right to the state aid that I'm modeling at minus three now. If you recall, I told you last week, I believe, from where I'm, what I'm hearing is state aid's coming in at minus three, not level. So, what I'm saying is the two five seven will be my offset for the minus three in state aid. So, I didn't change the tax report.
Okay, so, like Mr. Cerisi said, then, the amount of state aid, just to be clarified again, excuse me, the amount of tax revenue, the tax revenue would be?
I'm still modeling two percent.
Oh, okay, two percent. And, and then, when we go to the, the, go to the surplus fund, what is that new number?
It's the same, I believe, either in my model or in the subcommittee. It's still the one one five four, seven nine one.
So, in terms of the total amount of money that we're asking, you know, the taxpayers to put up, which was, you know, considerable, like four point six percent, if you put both numbers together, the two percent plus the taxpayers' money that comes in from the surplus side of the house, I assume is taxpayers' money, okay? Which gives us a baseline to work about, you know, next year. So, the total amount of money coming in is, in fact, a four point six percent increase in town revenues, if you may, for the budget. Is, is, am I correct there? I think I looked at the numbers, and I, you know, I've worked with some sheets here because I, I think that's, that's pretty accurate, okay? Two plus the other. And what I wanted to follow up on was that, in fact, the initial contributions from the taxpayers, regardless of the, the surplus being used, regardless of the two percent, is going to be the same as you proposed a month ago.
That's correct. It's still two percent in my, on my model.
Okay.
Mrs. Benson?
I would like to clarify the issue of the budget subcommittee and the social worker. Many of you remember during the many discipline hearings that we've had this school year, that I have an old saying, "It is better to repair a boy than to, it's cheaper to repair a boy than to bill a man." And the social worker, at our first hearing, we had two, and I thought it was a very, very good idea on Dr. Thornton's part to have one to work in the afternoon when they really could meet and accommodate the families. Now, I will have to defer to Mrs. Page, but I didn't leave with the understanding that we were cutting the social worker. Am I correct?
Well, in, maybe, maybe we didn't discuss it as thoroughly as we should have.
As thoroughly as we did, because-
It was one of the proposals that, when we talked about it, I had brought up things, I had asked Dr. Thornton what he said was directly related to kneecap scores, and he didn't say that that one was directly related to kneecap scores. And so, no, that was not what we then proposed, because we were talking about what was directly to kneecap.
As I said, the whole budget discussion, Mr. Chair, is centered on BEP and improvement of our students. And the kneecap scores were discussed briefly, because we haven't gone to where we think we should go. Not necessarily where we think we should go, but the correct amount improved, of, of improvement in the scores.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know which one of you three is first. Would you pick a number and let me know whose first?
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be very brief and just elaborate a little further on the social worker position. Again, the superintendent's original recommendation was two additional social workers. With a potential cut in state aid as a compromise, he submitted a supplement to that original recommendation, which would only add one social worker rather than two. And now, what we're hearing tonight is eliminating that second social worker as well. As far as priorities in the district, the superintendent's recommendation, that was his number one priority in the district, and we're eliminating both of the positions, which he has identified as his number one priority in the district. I know there's a lot of publicity and focus and politics around kneecap scores, and, but, you know, to me, that's not the be all, end all. I, I focus more on the whole child, and I'm worried about a lot of these children that we've unfortunately have seen in front of the committee for disciplinary issues, and that we have some of these needy children and needy families falling through the cracks, and I just want to make sure that we're attending to the needs of those children as well. And I look to, not myself and not this committee, as far as where to go with that. I look to the educational leaders of the district, and if they're recommending to you that that's something that the district has identified as a need in the district, then I, I think we should seriously take that into account, what the recommendation from the educational professionals are.
Mrs. Avzano, please. We've got three people that are ahead of you, Mrs. Benson.
Okay, thank you.
I would agree that we should revisit that, or at least talk it over, because I think it's an important priority. I just wanted to make a quick comment in general about where our budget is when we're talking about increases, just for perspective. I think you need to, we need to go back and look at the budget that we have in front of us. Page six, where we have the pie chart, and it, and it has the breakdown of what we spent year over year the last few years, and there are copies of that in the back of the room as well. And if you-
It's page six?
Yep, page six has a pie chart at the bottom. You look at the numbers going across, you can see that this year, the year that we're currently in right now, fiscal year eleven, the amount of money that we are on track to spend in our budget is actually less by several hundred thousand dollars than fiscal year oh eight actuals. That's pretty amazing. That's, three years ago, we spent more money than we're spending this year. This committee has done a lot of cutting in terms of the money from local tax support. I'm not including federal money in my comments. I'm talking about money we're taking from the taxpayers. There have been many, many cuts over the last few years, and appropriately so. But I think we need to, to realize, when we're talking about almost a two percent increase, we're talking about a two percent increase over what was two years of very tight budgets and, and very small increases. Just wanted to point that out. We've done a lot of hard work. There's been a lot of cuts in administration. I just don't want to lose sight of that, because I think we're all for keeping this budget as tight as we can, and being as mindful as we can of the economic times, but we, we have done a lot of cutting over the last few years, and it needs to be kept in mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Avzano. Dr. Thornton?
I'll just add to the conversation about, you know, what's kneecap related. We had a brief talk this morning about, you know, in a way, everything is related. If you go so many degrees of separation, you can make everything related, from buses to social workers to get kids ready to learn. I think our talk this morning was more like that first degree of separation for what's related, but in the end, everything is related to kids. That's how it should be. Secondly, Mr. Draper finished his homework. The number that currently, that the budget subcommittee is looking at, I believe, is fifty-eight, four eight zero, two six zero. Once again, fifty-eight, four eight zero, two six zero is the current number, I believe, as being proposed. I don't know if that jives with what you have.
No. I had fifty-eight, seven four two, nine six zero.
A little bit more.
So, I guess I'd ask that we get that number correct before we go forward.
Sure.
Okay. May I make this?
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
While we are correcting the number, in order to realize the conditions and the things that we're in, and the social worker did not come up this morning to be discussed in detail, I would ask our attorney, I would ask our attorney, would it be proper if I could make a motion that before we come up with the final number, that we would include a social worker? And if we had to identify the streams that the money from the social worker would come from, it would be worked out to come through breakage? So, is it proper for me to make a motion that we could include a social worker? I would think that would be-
Can we just, if you will, continue the discussion for a moment? Because I haven't had a chance to say anything yet.
But I would like to clear up that social worker-
I, I understand.
Before we get to the final number.
I understand. Can, can we just continue the discussion for a moment, please?
Okay.
And then I'll come back to you, so you can make that motion.
For the motion to include before they get the figures set. Very well.
Thank you. Mr. Mudge?
If I want to, Mrs. Avanzano, but comments about the budget, you know, who so after this year? What I see as a budget essentially is that, is that we're increasing salaries, okay, by four point six percent this year. We're increasing pension fund cost over last year, eleven, okay, by some eleven point five percent. We are increasing our purchased services seventeen point seven percent. So, I'm kind of concerned that, for example, you know, these are pretty substantial increases. And, you know, in terms of what's driving that, because from what I understood was, is that, you know, there wasn't, there's only in this year's budget, a one percent increase for, at least the ages, and I don't think that goes into a four point six percent increase. In addition, I would say to Mrs. Avanzano is that, in fact, okay, over the last couple of years, we accumulated a two million dollar surplus, a two million dollar surplus.
But you wanted us to spend, right?
Yeah, but-
Which we wouldn't have now, right?
Okay, yeah, well, wait a minute now. Time out. Now, we said things have been tough in the past, and so forth and so on, and we try to bleed the taxpayers, okay? Couple of years ago, we said we couldn't do art, we couldn't do this, and couldn't do that. Well, we're telling the taxpayers, we can't afford those things, we're going to cut them. Then yet, we accumulated a two million dollar surplus. So, you know, if things have been so tight, then how could we do that? And also, I would say to Ms. Avanzano was, what we did, we supplanted. We supplanted tax, we supplanted our taxpayers' money, okay, with state and federal revenue. And that's how we accumulated a surplus. And I think that that's been discussed even at the, one of the budget subcommittee meetings. So, I'd like to understand, Dr. Thornton, and I think this, August made a very good suggestion, and I think it should apply to the, to the budget, that the budget should be certified, that it's compliant with state, federal, and local regulations, okay? It's, it must be. And that goes hand in hand with the audit, the audit issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge. Dr. Thornton?
Sure. Yeah, a couple of things-
I haven't quite finished, please. So, I would ask Mr., Dr. Thornton to address that, please.
Sure, a couple of things to answer your questions. First, what you're talking about earlier with large numbers jumping from year to year, once again, that's a function of Yuccoa. As we've said on numerous occasions, money has been in different locations, pre-Yuccoa and Yuccoa. You have a certain one, after I'm done, we can certainly, Mr. Draper, go to the budget book and show you how that works, but it's just not the case we have increased in large amounts. It's a function of Yuccoa and money changing locations. The bottom line, still the bottom line. In terms of the surplus, this is no new surprise. We've had very transparent, open conversation for the past two years, saying, we know we have our money right now, federal money. We're going to use the federal money now, save the local money for the rainy day. Twenty twelve is the rainy day. We are looking to spend the money. We have stockpiled, because now federal money is gone. If you look to other districts, similar things are happening. It's a very difficult budget time. We have publicly said, this is what we need to do to get through twenty twelve. It's always been twenty twelve's the year, hour goes away, this is a good thing that we have a surplus, not a bad thing.
Dr. Thornton, I cannot-
Excuse me, excuse me. I don't, I don't-
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is not an argument between two people-
I know, it's just discussion on numbers.
You have to wait till you're recognized.
Are you chairing the meeting, Ms. Avanzano?
Whoa, wait a minute. I am.
Yes, sir.
And you will please wait until you're recognized. Thank you.
But I hadn't finished my discussion with him.
Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick points. As Mrs. Avanzano pointed out, from oh eight until the, the, the current budget year that we're operating in right now is actually a hundred thousand dollars less than the budget we were operating with in, in two thousand and eight. To, to say we bled the taxpayers over the last two years is ludicrous. We've accumulated a two million dollar surplus, right, by cutting purchases, by freezing salaries, by renegotiating contracts. We've done the fiscal responsible thing, and that's how we've accumulated a two million dollar surplus, not by handing out pay raises like we've seen at the last meeting. Also, just to bring a point, the, the town has an eight million dollar surplus. So, I, I mean, is it? The school, the school district strategic plan calls for the district to maintain a budget surplus of two percent. So, we're maintaining the surplus as the district strategic plan outlines that we should maintain, finally, which has not been done in the past. Prior to two thousand and eight, Mr. Mudge is correct, the taxpayers in this town were bled because the local property tax increase that the school budget required was approximately two million dollars per year. Every year, the school budget went up by two million dollars, which relied on the local property tax increases prior to two thousand and eight. So, I think the numbers don't lie. They're right there in the budget book. What I'd like to do at this time is I'd like to offer a motion to approve the budget subcommittee's recommendation with the addition of adding the one social worker's position back into the budget.
I'll second that motion.
I second that motion, and it was identical motion that I was getting- I second that motion, and it was identical motion that I was getting the information from the attorney.
I'll withdraw my second, and Mrs. Benson will second because she had that idea earlier.
Not who's got the ideas supplying what the kids need.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about a couple of things before we move forward on, on voting on the motion. First of all, I think you all should know that a conversation that I had with the, I guess she's the finance director, Trish Sunnill, today, I asked what, what $100,000 in the taxpayers' contribution was worth on the tax bill, okay? And she used the number of every three and a half million dollars equals $1 on the tax rate. Now, to bring that down to something closer to what we're talking about, $100,000 is a little bit less than 3 cents, okay? So when you're thinking about $150,000, $116,000 that you're going to give back to the taxpayers, you're talking about 5 cents? And the other thing that I think that Mr. Cerisi brought up, which is important, we're not out of the woods in the budget crisis. We're only in the first year of the budget crisis with the lack of stimulus funds. It's important for us to have that money available. We go and spend it all now, as Mr. Mudge suggested last year, that we should have put the $2 million out and then worry about this year when it comes around. We have to be concerned about how we hit our taxpayers every single year, not just one year. And I would tell you that as far as I'm concerned, we need to stay to that 2 percent. And Mr. Cerisi, you were a little incorrect when you talked about the town's budget surplus or undesignated cash. It's a little bit over $10 million, not 8.6. They have a note from the golf course for $1.8 million, which goes back to the undesignated cash fund. So understand that they control our purse strings, and we need to be able to, to do the things that we need to do, to be prepared for emergencies, and that's what that money is for. It isn't taking it away from the taxpayers. It isn't gouging the taxpayers. If you're talking about 5 cents on the tax rate, I don't think we're talking about doing the taxpayer an injustice. Mr. Mudge?
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, I don't think you understand the magnitude of what you have said. Dr. Thornton, you have told us that us in this food committee has supplanted local revenues with federal dollars.
No. I did not say that.
You, I believe, although we ought to clarify that, okay, because you can look at our budget from one year to the next, and you will see that, in fact, okay, we escalated era and we spent era and, and, and stimulus money, like $4 million, and we cut from our budget. The data is there. We cut from our budget corresponding monies. And I believe, you please correct what you said then, because I think it's an admission of, in fact...
I will try again.
Please.
We spent the our money in absolute concert with ride's directions. For example, in one year, we talked about using the our funds for transportation. That was the exact location they told us to spend the money on. We then correspondently took the money we would have spent on transportation, and that local money went into the fund balance.
Yes, but.
If I could finish. Exactly, and with ride prescribed.
Sure. So, but Dr. Thornton, don't you know that that was the planning money? Because what we said, I don't care about ride. The federal government says the following. We spent $250,000, okay? We're supposed to create new jobs.
Excuse me, Mr. Mudge.
New jobs.
Mr. Mudge?
Yes?
Is a point of order?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded, and I'm not quite sure if the discussion we're having at this time is germane to the motion that's on the table.
Well, if we're supplanting monies.
It's, it's, it's not germane to the budget. Your discussion does not have any reflection on the budget that we're talking about, okay? So it's not germane to the, to the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Surely. Mine is.
Go ahead.
When I came, when I spoke earlier, I was talking about a agenda reporting form that had come in tonight.
Yes.
That I thought we were going to vote on. I was going to amend it. Now I've had, Larry has just given us a motion to accept the budget with the adding back in of a percentage social worker. I want to make sure that if I'm voting on your motion, does that, have you gone with one thing forward to the town council?
I might.
Because I need to add a third thing on, and I haven't spoken to it yet.
Just, just, Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, my motion was actually to approve the, not the superintendent's recommended budget, which is what you have in front of you right there on that agenda reporting form. My motion was to approve the Budget Subcommittee's recommended budget with the addition of the social workers' position being added back in.
And how about the, the zero budget and the minus 2 percent?
We haven't gotten to that.
We haven't gotten to that.
But if I, if we vote this one in, which you're suggesting, does that preclude the other two being brought up? Or are you going to say, oh, I'm sorry, it's over?
I'd be, no, I'd be, I mean, I'd defer to the chairman or the attorney on that, but I'd be more than happy to continue the discussion and consider sending that along as well, what you would like to discuss.
All right. I believe that could be a second motion, Mr. Attorney.
That could be a second motion.
You can make it in the form of a second motion, so long as it's clear what budget is being submitted to the town.
I think they asked.
Okay, Mr. Thompson. Okay, last question, Mrs. Benson. What's not quite, I'm sorry, what's not quite clear?
I want to just make sure that, that I don't lose the chance to get forward a downward 2 percent budget for your consideration.
I.
For your consideration.
I certainly want to.
By this motion.
I certainly want to consider.
Okay.
The additional.
Thank you. Mrs. Benson?
On the motion, which has been made and properly seconded, and we, I thought, were in the discussion portion of it.
We are.
On this motion, I would like to ask that we have a roll call.
That's fine.
Vote, so that we may keep proper records. And to our attorney sitting there, to our attorney, that is one of the things that is recommended, that all our business be on a roll call vote.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
What, Mrs. Avanzano?
Just one clarification for, actually for Mr. Thompson on what you were just suggesting. The attorney just said, pretty much, it's clear that we have to submit one budget to the town. However, as we did last year, we submitted a list. We submitted a list that would get, that they could take a look at, that would get them, if they choose, they can choose to cut whatever they wish. We, by law, have to submit one budget. We can't say, take or pick, here's three budgets. That's not how it works. By law, we have to submit a budget. That doesn't preclude us from sending options to them. That's how I understand it.
I'm going to make a motion that we do just that, and I've already heard, no, sorry.
Not legal, apparently.
Sorry.
Mr. President?
Just a moment, please. Are you, do you, are you clear on that?
I didn't mean to jump up on that one, but I'm very interested in submitting, I was going to suggest two budgets, but the committee came out and said, we want two budgets. So already, what Mrs. Avanzano just said has been kind of superseded because the Subcommittee's going to recommend two budgets. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's my understanding the Subcommittee is submitting to this body, the full body, two different budgets, and in fact, I think that the presentation that's here has three. The school committee can go through line item by line item as they have been, but ultimately, you need to pick one budget and, and vote it and submit it to the town. Now, as I understand it, in the past, what you've done is, is submitted a budget and then also just given almost an informational sheet to the, to the town to say, if you, if you choose to make additional cuts on your end, here's, here's where they could be done.
Kim?
All right. One of the things we discussed today in our Budget Committee was submitting two budgets. And Ms. Mel, you even asked me about that beforehand. But one of the things we, we neglected, it was an oversight on all of us, and I guess it should have been pointed out to us, was that when we talked about that second budget, that 0 percent budget, we talked about having some come out of the fund balance, and we talked about approximately about $500,000. But that was not taking into consideration that up at the top, that Dr. Thornton has already taken out 1.154. Am I correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Right. So, you know, now I'm hesitating because basically, if we keep on with the recommendation we had from this afternoon, we're talking about 1.6 of the fund balance, and that is more than 50 percent. We're talking about 75 percent, which I think is going to be, not put us in a safe position because it's one of those things of, while, if we take 75 percent of our, our, our fund balance in 2012, we will have next to nothing to be able to take out in 2013. So I'm, I am slipping back and, you know, gritting my teeth to say, I don't know, we didn't, we didn't think about that. It wasn't pointed out to us this afternoon that it may not be wise to go with the 0 percent because we're looking at 75 percent of our fund balance.
I would also remind you, Mrs. Page, that in your discussion of your Subcommittee, that you anticipated about $450,000 worth of, worth of savings coming out of negotiations.
Well, we did take that in consideration. That's where I'm getting the 500,000.
So, you know, you're really putting yourself in, in harm's way there. If we have any extraordinary expenses, we're, we're in trouble.
Right.
Mrs. Benson?
That wasn't, I have to go to your last question before I can get to the one I wanted to ask. That wasn't a drive in force negotiations, because another thing that we didn't take into consideration would be non-reoccurring situations. And in taking that, we didn't mention it, but in thinking about it, what are those things that we had this year that was expense that will not be of an expense next year? Those are what you call non-reoccurring. And I mentioned two or three times about our breakage account. Now, we keep talking about the budget, budget, budget. All we have to present to the town council is a bottom not number.
That's not correct.
They do not want our budget. We have to submit to the town manager the bottom number by a certain date. Am I correct?
Wait, wait, can we not have it just?
Counsel, weigh in on that, please.
Which the question was?
You just submit a bottom line, or we got to submit a budget?
You have to submit the bottom line or the budget?
Which one?
The school committee is charged with suggesting a budget to the town that they feel they can operate the schools on and comply with the BEP, contract, regulation, that sort of thing.
Which is bottom line.
It's not the bottom, they get bottom line approval.
Right.
They don't get line approval.
We have the.
You have to submit the line, the budget to them.
Yes.
I'm going to veer a little bit because we have a citizen here who's on Budget Committee, and I definitely, and you're at quite a disadvantage for not being the regular school committee attorney. I see that.
I'm always at a disadvantage.
What did you say? Mr. August?
Believe me, Mrs. Benson, huh? Did you have to submit a line item budget?
Okay.
At a later date, but that's not what we can go through now because when they send it back, we will have to go through it again.
Right. Okay, I want to make an amended motion. I'm sorry, I thought you were all done.
Did you say I was right? You said right, or were you just speeding the meeting on?
They have bottom line approval, not line item, but we present the line item budget.
But what are we going to present them?
We're going to vote on that.
Because we have many things that will be changed. Because just this afternoon, I was looking at the point. You read one thing for pension, and believe me, the figures you read, they are going to be triple. So you still have those non-occurring situations. And I'm trying to figure out, do we send them the bottom line where we can have a discussion? They cut it out, and I've never known them to go through, past practice, go through and cut out anything that we would send them to them.
You can't.
Thank you, Mrs. Benson.
That's what we got to say, send them the bottom line. I will agree with whatever you all agree with.
Mr. Mudge?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what's in the budget, but I, I would like to ask about several issues, but I, I could not find this information in the budget. For example, do we have money in there for a DARE program and a COPS program?
For the COPS program, as in the middle high school?
Yeah, the senior high school, yeah.
The town pays for that?
Again, this is why it's very important to understand the state, federal law, and the town charter. It is mandatory that we identify all of our expenditures. Now, is that an expenditure? Is that a program we want? Now, just to let you know, you know, of course, I said this year in and year out, year in, and I probably doesn't sink in, but I will let you know that the town's budget does not have a penny in for the COPS program or the DARE program because of their budget cuts. But that's insignificant. The fact of the matter is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to identify all anticipated revenues and expenditures. So, they're not in there. So now we got to talk about the funding those programs.
Excuse me just a second, Mr. Mudge.
Yeah.
Mr. Draper, is there anything that's not identified in the ICAO accounting that we've done for the budget?
I believe we've identified all the, all the known expenditures and revenues in this budget.
So what Mr. Mudge is talking about, we don't have a problem there?
COPS is not included. That would be a town funded expense. DARE, I believe, is a supply line at $5,000. We do not carry the personnel expenses associated with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. What I'm saying, we have an obligation to carry if we want the program, okay? And is it a school, is it a school expenditure? See, that's what this is all about, and that's what Yucco is about, by capturing all the data so we can estimate what's going on, not money over here, over there, okay? I understand your answer, okay? I would also ask, I would also ask, are the title 19 Social Security Act, Early Periodic Screening Diagnosis and Treatment Program Services identified in our budget? There should be an estimated cost in there in the amount of probably approximately $1.2 million. I have seen no evidence of that program being in our budget. The next one. GHGRI expenditures. Do we have any GHGRI expenditures for this year?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Are they in the budget?
Yes.
All right. Could you point that out to me, where it's at? Because what I did see in the town audit, that money was taken out of the school capital, excuse me, the school fund to pay for that in advance, okay? So is the GHGRI in the budget, and it is, is it funded, being funded out of the Dr. Thornton's budget figures?
Correct.
Would you tell me where it's at, please? I didn't see it.
All, all the health expenditures and all the dental expenditures are a GHGRI expense. To, to clarify what that is, Governmental Health Group Rhode Island has converted into the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust. They are a manager, if you will, for us of a self-insured insurance program.
Right.
So, we purchase our healthcare and for any employee of the district, it looks and feels like a fully insured plan. I have my Blue Cross Blue Shield card, I go for service, I get what I need. It follows the plan just like it used to when it was a fully insured plan. However, we as a district pay for the services we use. We, we do not receive health insurance per se.
I understand.
It's just full-
Well, my question that is, in the two thousand nine, the two thousand audit, ten audit-
Yes.
-showed, we had to capture reserve funds to pay for that cost for the following year. So the ten audit reserved monies to pay for eleven. My question is, do we, do we have money set aside so that we don't have to take twelve, you know, expenditures, you know, out of eleven, you know, surplus?
That was, that was a one time, that was a one time, that was a one time event. And the reason for that was when we went, when we went from a, are you all set or?
Well, yeah, as long as we don't have that GHGRI that-
Correct, that's not an ongoing expense.
...in the budget for a couple of years. Okay? Do we have any, in our budget, do we have any capital expenditures in our budget for this year and what, what, what are they?
The revenue side of the account was adjusted for a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation. Find that in-
I know that, okay? Now, could you tell me what the capital expenditures are that we are approving if we approve this budget?
We prioritize through the CIP. I would say if I-
Is there a list that we could have at, as a committee to look at?
Sure.
What the five hundred thousand dollars represents? Because that's an increase now, right? To our, our general fund budget.
No. It's, it's going into our special revenues. It's a thirty-one hundred series account. If you go to our CIP, it identifies things in the school capital reserve. What we would do is identify items in the school capital reserve that we feel are of a high priority, bring them to the school committee for approval. And if the town appropriates tax dollars to the thirty-one hundred account, we would ask for your approval to move forward with that project.
So you're suggesting we're asking the town five hundred thousand dollars to add to the school capital reserve fund as part of this?
Correct.
So, in addition to the taxes, we're gonna ask them for another five hundred thousand dollars? That's what I just heard.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I, I, well, I disagree with the budget prop, the way this is being handled, okay? But I understand what you said, thank you. So in addition, we just tacked on another five hundred thousand bucks we need from the taxpayers.
That, but that's, sorry. I don't believe that's a change. We, we asked for that last year and we budget for it every year because we know that we're gonna have capital improvement projects that we need to take care of.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, Ken. It's, I just wanna understand what it is, that we're gonna be asking for that because there's gonna be some things we can't do, we have to in the capital investment. I disagree the way it's being handled from a budgeting and accounting standpoint.
Fine.
But forgetting that, I've got several more.
Well, you know, Mr. Mudge, no, no, just, just a moment, please.
May I finish, please, for a change? Other people here can talk all day long.
Wait a minute, there's no one that talks any more than you. Now, just a, just a moment, please. We have a point of order.
I have-
We have a point of order, you must stop.
Point of order. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the table.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Just a moment, please.
He's not running the meeting, sir.
Just-
You're running the meeting, please.
Not according to you, Bill.
Well, you're not running it very well, I can tell you that.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table that's been seconded. I think everyone's had the, at least one opportunity to speak to the motion that's on the table and I think our discussion at this point is far off from what the motion on the table is. I would ask that we call a question at this time, please.
Have a second on that?
Mr. Chairman.
We need a vote on that, please. Call a roll, please.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yeah.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Motion passes, motion, motion passes six to one.
Okay.
Would you state what the vote was for so that it will be properly noted in the minutes and the audience will know?
To call the question.
Huh?
To call the question.
No. What we voted on.
You want the motion is what you want?
Yes.
But just a moment, I thought. You have the, the correct dollar amount, right?
I do. The correct dollar amount, amount is fifty-eight million, eight hundred and five thousand, four hundred and sixty.
Now, does that have the one social worker in that number?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, could you please read the motion and put that dollar amount in it, please?
The dollar amount was not in the motion, but you can put that, what the motion was for. That's where I always like for a motion to be read back because we're confusing a little bit. Our motion was to put the social worker back into the budget.
Yes. Please, please read the motion, Lauren.
Yes. Motion was to approve the budget subcommittee's recommendation with the addition of one social worker. The total will be fifty-eight, eight oh five, four six zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Now, would you, we're gonna have a roll call vote?
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yeah.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
No.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Motion passes five to two.
Okay, would you read the motion back?
That you just voted on?
Yes.
To approve the budget subcommittee's recommendation with the addition of one social worker back into the budget, the total dollar amount was fifty-eight, eight oh five, four six zero.
Okay. I know I seem like it's, uh, wrong to ask those things, but we are running over a half million or a million dollar business. And if we don't state things right when we put them in motions and read them back, we never know when we are gonna have to go and produce the records. Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Thompson didn't have his hand up for the last-
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, I was waiting for you to stop. Yes, Mr. Thompson. Okay.
You've been waiting on me to stop.
Next step, uh, we have now completed changing the superintendent's recommended budget from what was originally on this agenda reporting form and we have now called his number fifty-eight, eight oh five, four six zero, and we've included something about a social worker in that. There was also a mention of a level budget, which I understood to be fifty-eight, oh nine two, oh four three. Is there anyone still advocating a level spending budget?
What was that number?
So, do you have a number for it? I got the number fifty-eight, zero nine two, zero four three.
Repeat your number again.
Fifty-eight, zero nine two, zero four three. All I did was, I'm not sure what I did.
Track the eight hundred and sixteen.
Eight, eight sixty-eight, four seventeen from fifty-eight, nine six oh, four six oh. So those things have changed, so that's why I'm suggesting I may not have the number correct.
Uh, Mrs. Avanzato?
I'm not sure of the number either, but I, I would support Mr. Thompson's idea of at least putting that information forward to the council and, you know, by way of a list or whatever form we need to do that in.
In essence, I think what we need to do, Mr. Thompson, is to provide items that would get us to that number. That's what we did last time when we provided them, we told them what, we gave them the budget, if I remember this correctly, Mr., Dr. Thornton, if you would correct me if I'm wrong, uh, we gave them the bottom line budget along, the, the budget with the bottom line and then we said, if we did what you asked and did a minus two, these are the items that we would be considering to cut. They don't get the option of, of approving. We just showed them where we thought we, we could cut in order to get to that number. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Wait just a minute, I respectfully disagree.
With what, with what part?
With the statement you just made.
Okay.
Explain it.
I, I just did.
Well, maybe I'll have to use the old term convinced because I respectfully disagree with that.
We gave-
Cause I'm still waiting on the determination from, from our attorney if we have to send the whole budget or if we send numbers to the council.
I think he answered that question. He said the whole budget.
If I could help with that?
You certainly can.
After you finish this evening, Mr. Draper then spends the next several days making a new final budget book, if you will, with your final budget with the correct numbers. That product goes to the town.
What do we have that leads to another question? May I ask the question, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Benson.
Okay, that leads to the question. What do we have to get to the town council this week by way of charter?
By way of charter, if memory serves, it's February twenty-eighth, we give our final work to the town council.
Oh, no, no, you jumped a step.
I did not.
Nothing this week, yes, isn't it?
Nothing this week. Well, that leads to another question. Why did we have to do everything tonight?
Cause you didn't wanna meet next week.
We're all done meeting. Uh, Mr. Cerisi?
We all done meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What do you, I have a question for the chair.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you.
So you just completely say?
I'd like to continue on the discussion that Mr. Thompson initiated and, and I support the initiative that Mr. Thompson's putting forward. Think how, and correct me if I'm wrong, I defer to the committee members that were here for the budget process last year as well as the superintendent, Mr. Draper. But if my memory serves me correctly, we adopted a budget, uh, last year, a budget number and a budget, Mr. Draper put together, the, the new budget, submitted the request to the, the town manager and the town council and we also put a cover page on that budget basically showing that these are the additional cuts that the superintendent would recommend to the committee if we were to go to the zero percent. In other words, to show the council, to show the manager, to show the taxpayers what the additional cuts would be to get to that zero number, what the numbers would be, what, what numbers would actually represent a zero number. So I would, I support, uh, Mr. Thompson's, um, initiative here and I would advocate that we, we put that same cover letter together, which is basically the zero percent part of the spreadsheet that shows the items, the numbers to correlate with them, just so the, the taxpayers and the council members know what they're looking at if we were to be, if they were to cut the budget further and, and, and impose a, uh, no, no increase to the school budget. I think that's what we're basically trying to drive at here is to make sure that, uh, we're clear on what those numbers would be. So I, I agree with, uh, with Mr. Thompson on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mudge? Uh, I would agree with, uh, Mr. Thompson's statement and Mr. Cerisi, Mr. Cerisi's statement. However, I would say that we are gonna provide a list of areas that are gonna be cut, that the school committee approves that list and it becomes a list of the school committee and a commitment to the town, that if it's cupcakes we're saying it's gonna be cut, the cupcakes will be cut. If it's whatever, it's gonna be cut.
Okay?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Benson, please.
I'm pleased to hear you say, members, that you agree with Mr. Thompson, but let's give his budget the same opportunity. You said we had to submit the things that was going to be cut and what we were keeping for the fifty-eight. So don't send his number half clothed. So that means that we have got to submit what will be cut under his number because that is a half clothed number if we agree with it. Because we are going a different way from what the council says. And in other words, I see, I don't see how you can object to what I'm saying because if you send a budget with the fifty-eight and you agree with his, let's sit and talk about the cuts that go with it. Otherwise, it's an isolated number, cause you've been preaching all night that we have to send a sheet with the cuts. I maintain that we sent the bottom number. So we got two things going here to the council, a bottom number on one thing and a budget on the other. So let's give his budget the same opportunity we have with the other one.
Mr., are you, are you, are you done? Mrs. Benson?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Avanzato?
I would like to make a motion, um, that we send over to the council a cover letter as described by Mr. Cerisi with cuts that this committee has also considered as well as the superintendent has recommended in order to get to a zero percent budget.
I, I don't know, do we really need a motion for that?
Because I, I have a procedural question. Seeing that there's no committee meeting before the twenty-eighth.
We gotta do it now.
You have to do it now or have to interact with me to make that list and trust me to put the list forward.
This is here.
We gotta do it now.
Stand by the list.
The problem that I have with the list, uh, Mr. Thompson, if you would look at item number seventeen.
Okay, here's seven, here's seven, yes. Mm-hmm.
Do you, do you realize what that says, right?
This is breakage.
Leave breakage, remove items above.
Remove all of the adds to get to zero percent. We would remove all of those additions that the superintendent just outlined and the ones that we just voted to send to the council.
So, all the ones that were in the one point six budget would be removed as part of that eight hundred and six thousand dollars. That's what that item number seventeen says.
Okay. Mrs. Page?
We would also be looking at a hundred and fifty thousand because in the top, we took out two teachers for a hundred, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty-five thousand because we took out two teachers and we also took twenty thousand dollars out of the merit pay. So what I would suggest is that we would not take out the cafeteria fund balance because I think that that's almost, that's one of those very difficult things, which then allows us to then have, um, give me a second here. Which then allows us to take about ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty to say, okay, what are, what are we gonna do with that? And that just merely reduces what we would be getting from the, um, the negotiations. So that your negotiations go from being four hundred and forty-eight, five thirty-one to, um, I'm sorry, um, to being about three hundred and fifty-nine, um, zero zero one. Really a work session in progress, these numbers on the table. I, I agree with that idea of, it's obviously we have more cuts than we need to get to zero because of the-
Hmm. But in the, in the-
Could you speak out so they can hear?
In the two percent budget, all right, you're talking about two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, um, in the items that were above, I realize that we changed, we didn't take all of those, but you would be taking those adds that we did in the, in the one point six budget and those would go away.
Right.
That, that's what you have to know if you, if you use that eight hundred and six, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollar number. I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on that.
Yeah, we're not adding anything, but we're keeping the status quo. The biggest, the biggest challenge would be, and you know, and I- The biggest challenge would be, and you know, I don't really know if it's doable, would be the negotiations, so you could end up basically adding $358,000 to your fund balance. I mean, that's the reality, of by going to zero percent, that's what you'll be adding to your fund balance. So that just takes us a little higher than the 1.154 that we're using of our fund balance now.
Mr. Mudge was first.
Okay.
Chairman, I just want to make sure I understand something, and it's the breakage estimate. That's an estimate that we would expect to save because of teachers coming in and out next year, the FY 12.
Dr. Thornton, can you answer that question?
Yes, breakage is something we budget from a historical sense of who comes and goes. The difference this year is, we already know, we have advantage this year in that we had an early retirement program. We had seven folks already in the queue as of June 30 of last year. Now we have some more activity happening now. Based on that, you get the 540 number.
My question, Dr. Thornton, is that wasn't in your original budget submission of $59,221, was it?
It was.
It was?
Mm-hmm.
All right, why didn't I see that?
Mrs. Benson?
When I look at items to consider for reaching no tax increase, those are so unfair and so narrowly worded. Read them. We can reach a zero tax increase without remove all of additions above, retain cafeteria fund balance, and number 19, 17, 18, and 19. And I'm very sorry, Dr. Thornton, that you didn't mention that, because this sheet came from your office, and we never looked at it, because we were looking at things that were attainable. Now it hits us in the face like the snowstorm last year, and these things to consider zero balance, it is very unfair what you have under here.
Mrs. Benson, we've had this now for over a month.
We certainly have, Mr. Welch.
Okay, so please-
And this is the first time-
I can't help it if you haven't read it, Mrs. Benson.
I read it.
Dr. Thornton gave us this budget over a month ago.
We didn't get this sheet over a month ago.
You got- everything that's below the yellow line was on the original submission from Dr. Thornton. Dr. Thornton?
How did you wait?
Just to clarify, yes, the sheet has seen some revisions in that-
Right.
If I could finish? In the green section-
Welcome to-
When I reduced state aid, I took away, I made a column here with some reductions. The yellow pieces, the tough conversation, has not changed. They go to zero, just to clarify. Going to zero really is not status quo in that. We have a health care increase of 12%, a pension increase of 17%. If you went to a zero, you're actually regressing, if you will, but these yellow things are not easy. I don't want anyone to think going to zero is an easy thing, it just isn't. That's why the things down here are painful.
And there are some assumptions in there.
There's some big assumptions.
There's some very large assumptions. Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I thoroughly understand, because we could never go to a zero budget, because state law doesn't allow us to have a budget less than we've had in the last few years.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
I, uh-
You're welcome.
When I was running for this office and putting myself up on this table, I went around to people in this town, and I said, "Do you want your taxes reduced?" And the people said to me, "Yes, we want them reduced." And I said, "You understand that if you want them reduced, you have to cut your spending, school spending. You can't reduce your taxes if you increase your spending, and you can't reduce your taxes if you go with no tax increase. That's still not reducing your taxes. The only way you can reduce your taxes is to lower the spending." And they said, "Please, go on that school committee and bring that message to them." So that's what I've tried to do. And I've had- I have a problem with this list as a whole, because this list is telling me this is all that the school administration is even considering. And I had- at our last meeting, I had Mr. Welch said, "No one's come to me with ideas of how can we make more money? How can we not spend as much money?" And I've heard such things as consolidation. I've heard $500,000. Now, do I see consolidation in here? There's no consideration that we might save money through consolidation. I've heard Jamestown contract, that there's something in the range of maybe 500, $400,000 or $500,000 that we've been leaving on the table, that we could get more money from Jamestown. Is that listed in here? No. This seems to be very carefully selected in order that it will seem very difficult to the townspeople to get lower, because as low as you get using this list that has been handed to us by the superintendent, who wants that tax increase budget, all right? Make no mistake about it, he has picked out the things that he's going to take away. And as we know in the past, a lot of times, these things are picked carefully so that the townspeople will say, "Well, no, I don't want to get rid of that. I don't think enough time has been spent on looking in the other areas. So I'm going to cut myself short. I'm going to simply say that those of you who ran this year and said to the taxpayers of this town, "We're going to lower your taxes," this is the night on which that promise has to be enacted. The only way you're going to lower your taxes is to lower the spending on the budget. And what I'm asking you to do is to go forward with a- You've heard the budget of 58,805,460. That's the tax increasing budget that the superintendent is bringing forward. You've heard a level funding budget of 58,092,043. That is a budget which will not reduce your taxes. Neither of those two options will reduce your taxes. The only way you're going to reduce your taxes is minus 2%, which is 57,223,626. The superintendent has four bags of money. We're handing him one bag. This is one bag that we're going down on. It's the amount of money that we pay locally for our homeowners' taxes. Those have been going up. This budget will take them down. The other three bags are the state monies, the federal monies, and all the monies that are being raised by these booster clubs and other rentals and other monies that come into the system. All those monies can be utilized. All those monies can be honed. I've been talking- I've mentioned ways that we can save money, ways that we can make more money, but the bottom line is, if you want to go to the taxpayers and say, "I voted to reduce your taxes," then this is the only budget that you can really send forward. I was under the impression until about 10 minutes ago, when I heard from the new lawyer, he said, "We can only send one figure over to the town council." I did not think that that was true, because I think in the past, there have been more than one number submitted from here to the town council. I would just as soon do that. Send them the plus 2%. Send them the zero, and send them the minus 2%. Have them say to us, "Okay, we're going to go along with you. We're going to lower it 2%." But at the same time, if we do that, I want to say to them directly in a meeting and try to do it without getting them upset, but to say, "Look, I would like you guys to go along with reducing your side, the town side, by 2%. It's not my position to tell you to do that, but if we come over with a reduced budget and take it out on the school and get more creative with squeezing that bag of money and thinking of new ways to do things, okay, then why shouldn't they be able to do the same thing?" I think the bottom line, the taxpayers asked us November 2nd, reduce our taxes, and this is what I'm trying to bring forward. If I need to make a motion, I would request that the parliamentarian of this meeting instruct me as to how and when to make such a motion, because I think it's very important that we give the town council the option to come out with a minus 2% tax-reducing budget for this town. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Avizado?
There's currently a motion on the table. Once that motion is voted on, you can make another motion. Couple of comments on what Mr. Thompson just said. The town council can do whatever they want. Any and all options are open to the town council. Zero, negative two, negative five, whatever they want to do. Plus five. Let's look at both sides. They can do whatever they want, and it's their job to look at that and figure out where they want to go with it. What you're referring to in terms of having sent over more than one number to the council was sending over a list of items. We never sent more than one budget over to the town council, because it's not allowed by law. One complete budget and budget number goes to the town council by law. We can give them the other options per list. It's just as good. If they want to do that, that's fine. I think it's important you mention that this is a two-sided equation. We're going to cut to zero yet again, then we need the town to look at their expenditures as well, because for two or three years running now, they have gone to the cap. Every dollar we saved on the school side was spent on the town side. We have an obligation to these schools. If you look at where we are right now, we are spending less than we spent in 2008. I don't- I challenge another- to find another district in the state that's done that. I don't think there aren't. And you know, your points are very well taken, Joe, and I think everyone understands that we need to do the best we can. Have we done everything possible? No. There are monies available in consolidation and other areas that we have not yet plumbed, but we will need those in the years to come. It's not like we're finished. This is going to happen every year, where we have to come up with dollars to fund the school system. The other point that I wanted to make is, you know, make specific motions to cut things, because what's, you know, like I said, we've been even money almost for three years, and if you're talking about being zero or negative two, you're going to be cutting deeply into educational programs. I don't know that this town supports that. It's been my experience that every time you cut something, these halls are flooded with Not saying we shouldn't do the best absolute job we can do by the taxpayers. I think we have, a lot better than previous school committees. So.
I all say.
I'm finished.
I think there was a motion on the table by Mrs. Avizado. I'd like to second that.
Chairman, I had my hand up for some time.
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
I applaud Mr. Thompson's initiative, but I do agree with Mrs. Avizado, and I believe that we can only forward one budget over. But with respect to that, if we would have sent over a vote on a $57,222,360 budget, I would feel obligated, also in what Mrs. Avizado said, is to tell the community what won't get done, and we would all have to be in agreement with that. I think our hands are tied. But I do have a suggestion, though, Mr. Thompson. I see when I look at basic educational plan, there's $9 million on the table. It's not required because of basic education, you know, because it's- $9 million is not required under support the BEP. So I make a motion to cut $6,500,000 from the budget that's not required to pay for health care and dental insurance that's on there.
Is there a second for that motion?
Well, $1.9 million, they're not BEP requirements.
That's two different motions, isn't it? Is there a second on Mr. Mudge's motion?
Play just a minute.
Well, that's not a BEP requirement.
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, yeah. You can't make the motion now. I'm sorry. Okay, can we vote on the motion, please?
Could she read the fact, please?
Would I please have you, Lorraine, would you please read the motion?
Motion that we send a cover letter to the town council with the superintendent's recommended cuts to get to a zero percent budget.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Point of order, please?
Yes, Mr. Mudge.
I don't believe that that was correct from our secretary. It was not Dr. Thornton's recommendations, but the school committee's recommendations for cuts. He recommends the budget, and we vote on it.
Okay.
So if you could restate that, I'd-
Motion that we send a cover letter with cuts as recommended by the school committee to get to zero percent.
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote?
We made that motion.
That was Linda Avizado, seconded by Larry Cerisi. Ready for roll?
Please.
Okay, Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Point of order, please, again.
What's your point of order, Mr. Mudge?
This is- we're talking about a process. We're not talking about a budget number at this point in time.
Right. I'm not clear on that myself.
So we're talking about the process, whatever we send over, we'll send over the pending list of whatever cuts goes with it.
Possible cuts.
Yeah, right. I just wanted to make sure that that's what it was.
All right. Okay. Are we ready? Go ahead.
Okay, so Larry Cerisi was yes. William Mudge?
Yes.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Joe Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Welch?
Yes.
Linda Avizado?
Yes.
Melvoid Benson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Could we have a short break, please? Five minutes? Thank you.
[inaudible]
Okay. We're back to work again. All right. Are we?
Are we on?
420838. Next year. FY.
Do we take, we haven't taken a vote, have we?
We could take a vote on the CIP.
Oh, okay, right, right. We did take a vote.
We're back live, Matt? Thank you. Okay. There's another item that's included in the budget, and that's the allocation of $500,000 for the appropriation to cover capital improvement needs. Now, this item should, we need to show it so that we can show that we're requesting funds to maintain the school property, which by '16-2, we're required to do. That's our task. If the bond issue for school buildings maintenance passes, this number will go away, and it probably will be gone for maybe eight to 10 years, or certainly will be a lot less because the capital improvements that we need to do in order to put the schools back in shape will then have been taken care of. But in order to make sure that we request the money in case the bond issue doesn't pass, we need to have on record our request for the money for CIP and not just ignore it and just hope that they give us some money. So that's why I have asked that it be put in the budget. Mrs. Avanzado?
Just a quick point related to a question or a point that Mr. Mudge was making earlier about seeing the list of items. I mean, this has been said a lot of times by Mr. Draper and by Dr. Thornton, and that is that the list as we have it is not something we're committed to by voting for this bottom-line number, correct? We have authority to change that at any point going forward. We're just putting in a certain amount, bottom line.
An example would be if something changes on the priority. For instance, we had a rough winter with our roofing. If we find we have a roof problem somewhere, we may come to you with a project that we figured was a few years out.
So before any of these things go to bid and we move to that point, we have a vote on those, right? Correct? That's, just wanted to establish that because I know that might be what you were asking.
Yes, Mr. Mudge. Mrs. Avanzado, it isn't a problem with the $500,000 the way it is because it is not in the $58,960 you're sending over to the town council. Not in there. That's the problem. So it isn't going to be a problem if it's not requested. And if it's not in the, whatever we, whatever you wind up with, if it ain't there, it's not going to happen. And that's one of the things I tried to say earlier, okay? You haven't asked for the money yet. The proper way to do it is in the school budget. Called the appropriated school budget. Now, that should come from the bottom line down here to the top line.
Mr. Draper, is there a reason why we put it where we put it and not down?
With the new, the new UCOA designations, it's a 3,000 series account. It used to be a 4,000 series account, which if you look at the revenue sheet, 45203 says appropriation of capital reserve. That number has since changed to a 3,000 series account, which we placed in the restricted funds. Mr. Mudge is correct in that it is an appropriation of tax dollars. However, it's changed from the 4,000 series to a 3,000 series, which we placed in the restricted funds.
So it's because of UCOA that it's where it is?
Correct.
I would disagree with that. In our budget to the council, it should be in the revenue stream there. It doesn't matter at all about the UCOA stuff. It is an expenditure.
Mr. Draper, can we get some kind of official ruling on that?
Yeah, I can request a ruling from the finance director and see if she has any issues.
And if it would please the committee, if it can be placed in the budget elsewhere to show it as a bottom-line part of our submission, that it be done once you get that information? Relocate it? Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Mudge?
I, from a, yeah, I just want to make sure that, from an accounting standpoint, I think that's the way to do it.
Okay. But, you know, assuming that the town agrees and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just trying to do it correctly.
Absolutely, that's all I'm trying to do.
All right. Excuse me, Mr. Thompson. Mr., what is your name again? Mr. Cerisi.
I would, you know, there's still more discussion to be had, but at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for funding for the CIP.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that for discussion, and I think the attorney had something to say on the issue.
Is that proper, attorney, to discuss before it is second? I should have discussed it. Have come before the most.
My suggestion was, I know someone had asked if your business manager could get an opinion from RIDE as to where that should be included. My personal feeling, I agree with Mr. Mudge, I think it's part of the overall appropriation, despite what, it has to be recorded for UCOA purposes for the budget. What you can do for today's purposes, you've already approved the 58805460. You can approve the 500, and then you can make the vote contingent on receiving information from RIDE. If RIDE doesn't have any objection to a consolidation of the two, then one number would go over in the form of an overall budget. If for some reason RIDE does have an issue, I don't think they would, then you would make the submission to the town in the form of two numbers. But my guess is, I think you're correct. I think it would be one.
Yeah, I certainly don't have any problem with it.
May I follow up with his comment, please? Is that, you know, I really think that's the way to do it. But also, just to give you a little background, what we had before in this town that allowed that to happen is we had this special, you know, school capital reserve fund, okay? It was put on the side. And what happened was, the town council kept the money over here, you see? And it never got shown up in our budget until we spent it. Well, that's inappropriate by all, you know, rules and regs of the state and the county, and it needs to be squared away. And the problem with that is, to show you the difficulty of that, is if you actually look in your budgets and actuals, the school budget would have shown prior years zero. But the actuals then include a million and a half, if you look for last year, a million two, of expenditures. It's ludicrous. It's, from an accounting standpoint, it's crazy, and it needs to be resolved.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Thompson?
Do we have a motion that's on the floor right now? Because I'm going to make a motion to amend it, or I'm going to make a second motion?
We have, we have a motion.
We have one, okay.
But it didn't get a second.
Yes, it did. Mrs. Avanzado seconded.
I did, yeah.
It was to approve the superintendent's recommendation for funding for the CIP made by Larry Cerisi, seconded by Linda Avanzado.
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Your voice is too soft and sweet.
I would like to move that the school committee send the town council at least one tax-reducing budget of 2% reduction in spending.
That's not, that's not a motion that you can do now. It's not really amending. You need to do it after we vote on this, Joe.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments?
I'm going to offer an amendment to that motion, then.
Could she read the motion back?
The motion was to approve the superintendent's recommendation for funding of the CIP made by Larry Cerisi, seconded by Linda Avanzado.
Okay, so now.
Okay, Mrs. Avanzado, you wanted to make a?
I'd like to make an amendment to that motion to reflect what the attorney said. If you could say it again, so I don't have to say it.
I understand your business manager is going to contact RIDE to get an opinion from them. My suggestion would be, is absent any adverse, it's probably not the correct word, opinion from RIDE, that the committee agree that this $500,000 should be included in the overall budget presented to the town. If RIDE, for some reason, feels that's inappropriate, then you would go forward as it's been voted now and provide them two separate numbers.
May I speak on that, please?
Yes.
I think it ought to be sent to the auditor general. He is the final say on this budgetary matter, not RIDE. Would you agree with that?
Mr. Draper, do you have a comment on that?
Well, initially, I thought I was going to consult with the finance director.
Since it's a UCOA issue, my thought would be that if RIDE, I don't think RIDE's going to have an issue with it.
Right, but the boss is really the auditor general. Right? So you might as well go to the top.
Is that okay, Mr. Draper? You have any problem with that?
Whatever the committee's.
Okay, fine.
Second.
Okay, that's the amendment.
I'd like to second the amendment motion.
Okay. Can we vote on the amendment first?
Roll call?
Yes, please.
Are there amendments?
Could we, could you read back the amendment?
That's right.
Is it contingent upon, contingent upon an opinion from?
Auditor General.
The auditor general. So auditor general, okay. Okay, this is contingent upon a decision from the
Okay, this is contingent upon a decision from the Auditor General, opinion from the Auditor General.
To include what? You didn't have, don't have the amount there. It's an incomplete motion.
Okay, so that's the amended portion of the motion.
The amendment. So are you voting on the amendment now?
On the amendment.
Okay. Okay, on the amendment, Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Yes.
The amendment passes unanimously.
Okay, now vote on the motion. Please read the motion.
The motion, the main motion, is to approve the superintendent's recommendation for funding of the CIP. That was made by Larry Cerisi, seconded by Linda Avanzato.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
I abstain on the basis I really don't know what the data is.
Kimberly Page.
No.
Motion passes 511.
Thank you. Okay. I want to get back to the agenda. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Thompson?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Before I do, I'd like to ask Ned if you check a figure for me. Is your current agenda reporting form as brought forth to the committee, but as discussed and changed and modified, does it now stand at 58805460?
Yes.
And if you subtract, and if you would do this for me, because I'm sitting here doing it by my old-fashioned way that I learned in school, if you subtract 1 million, or I should start with your number, 58,805460 minus 1,736834. Exactly. My motion is, I move that the school committee send to the town council one tax-reducing budget of minus 2% spending totaling 57,068626.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would like to speak to that.
Mr. Thompson?
I have tremendous faith in the superintendent and his business manager, and all of the brain power that's sitting up here at this table, and all the brain power that's out there in the in the community who have come forward with ideas for things that we can do better, ways we can save money, ways we can increase our accounts receivable. I think there are many, many, many things that can be done before we simply take a look at a sheet that's been prepared right now and looking at what is what needs to be cut in order to get to a certain number. I don't agree that those are the things that have to be done. Maybe if we keep doing the business as we did it last year or the year before, yes, maybe that's true. But I think when we force the superintendent to take a smaller bag of money from the town by 2%, it's not much, it's about $800,000. And we've already heard figures that add up to way more than that being spoken tonight. If we force him to reduce the amount of money that we're giving him, this will induce a creativity on the part of all of us here to bring this thing in under budget, on budget, and save the taxpayers the money that we went around and said we're going to help them save during this previous election. Thank you very, thank you for the second, whoever it was. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Cerisi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Philosophically, I agree with the proposal that Mr. Thompson's putting forward. My concern is, is I don't like to rely on faith alone. I'd like to see an identification of exactly what we're going to cut to reach that number. Simply just stating, cut 800,000, or cut 2% or 5% or 1% without identifying actually what you're going to cut to get to that number concerns me greatly. And I would be more supportive of it, or could support it, if we could or he could outline specifically what we're going to cut to reach that number, rather than just relying on faith alone. I think what we're doing here, the process we're following here, or possibly following here, is not very transparent and somewhat disingenuous to the people that those proposed cuts may affect. Because I can guarantee you, to get to that number, you'd be looking at things like outsourcing the cafeteria, extracurricular activities, transportation, class sizes, all those things would be impacted. And I could guarantee you, if you put that information out there to the community in a transparent way, this auditorium would be packed tonight, as members of this committee have seen it packed previously when we've proposed, or the superintendent has proposed such cuts. Those groups would come out to advocate for their area. So I'm a little bit reluctant to go down that path of supporting something that's basically relying on blind faith, and we're not proper, we're not really being transparent in the way that we're letting the community know what we are attempting to do, or maybe attempting to do. So and I can guarantee you, when word reaches the community that you put forward a cut to some of these things that I know are near and dear to members of the community, people are going to feel as though they weren't adequately notified of the committee's intention.
Mrs. Benson?
I will respectfully disagree that we are going on blind faith. I think this will be the most eye-opening rallying that we have ever had for support of the budget or support against the budget. Like you said, if they will be out here rallying, that's good for our budget that we presented. And that's something
I hadn't finished.
Oh, I thought you had. You stopped talking.
No, 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 I was waiting because I remembered your speech last week on courtesy and different conversations and so forth. And he's talking with the attorney, so I know it's important.
So are you going to continue?
I'm going to continue.
Okay.
It may be a open faith, because as I stated, and I will state again, some things that we think are blind, we can open eyes. Because I think it was Shakespeare, one of those English poets, that said, "Nothing is blinder than a man can see and don't want to see." So let's take that and work with that, because it can bring out the good for our budget.
Okay.
And democracy is dissent, and we will know. So not just shoot it down.
Okay, we're getting close to 10 o'clock. We need to move on.
Okay, I don't think we should move on at the price of not taking care of business. We are very close to them. In fact, we only have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little concerned here, and I just, I would ask that we defer to legal counsel. I'm worried that if the committee were to take the vote and the vote passes, does that effectively rescind the vote that we've already taken? I don't know, I'm a little bit leery about the process we're following, and I was just kind of asking that tentatively, so I would kind of
I think in effect, I believe in effect it would. I stand by my original opinion. I'm not sure how the committee can submit two separate budgets to the town. You submit one, and I think it was Ms. Avanzato who pointed out quite correctly, the town will then, you know, make a decision as to what they want to do with that budget. And as I understand the motion that's been formed and already passed, this committee will go one step further, present the budget, and then also present items that were up for consideration to be cut, that were not cut, but to actually simplify what the town's job is, they'll have something else to look at. But if you effectively pass a second budget, I think there's a number of things that could happen. Two could go forward, it could effectively rescind the first vote. You're into no man's land, as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't suggest it.
Mr. Mudge?
Mr. Chairman? Well, I support, get this, hard, look at that. I agree with Mr. Cerisi. And I would also say that it is mandatory, because we just voted on it earlier, okay, to submit the cuts attendant whatever budget is sent to the town council. So while we're talking $800,000, whatever the number is, unless we can identify those cuts, we can't override now the previous But also, I'd like to say is, it is not the superintendent's recommendations that we go forward with. It's the town council, excuse me, it is the school committees, it's ours. That's what we got elected for, is to make our recommendations. And when we go forward to the town council, again, it is no longer the superintendent's, it becomes each and every one of our recommendations to the council. And as such, we have an obligation in the community to let them know, as Mr. Cerisi has also said, and be transparent, so that they know from the get-go what's going to be a cut if we don't get the budget. Also, it gives the community an opportunity to muster together the strength to come back and to persuade the council, if you may, to approve a higher number. So the process is set, and if we only, if Mr. Thompson wants to just submit one budget, and that's the number, and he'll submit the recommendations, I might go along with it.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
Move the question?
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Well, we just need
I'm sorry, did you have something?
Yeah, I had something I wanted to say. Well, while I think if the town council cuts our budget to 1% or 2% below, I think then we have an obligation to, we have to figure out where we're going to cut. I did sit here last year when we proposed cutting things like sports, or the superintendent made that recommendation, and I didn't agree with it last year, and I wouldn't agree with it this year. But those would be some of the first places we would be forced to cut if we would have to, if we would take such a drastic measure, because they're not BEP things.
That's correct.
And I don't support that. I didn't support it last year, and I'm not going to support it this year. So then it comes upon things that are BEP things to cut, and I think that that will be extremely difficult. Not that we didn't all take going something that was difficult, but right now, if I have an opportunity to tell the students of North Kingstown, "I would like to increase your education, increase the possibility of the mandatory kneecap they have to take," I would rather do that than to submit a budget to them that says, "I'm not going to be able to find the means to be able to further our educational value." So it's the sort of thing of, while I do think it is laudable to put forth that budget, I don't feel as if I want to go through the exercise of then going through the cuts. If the town council forces me to do that, then I will do that. But at this point, I'm satisfied with the budget that we put forward.
Thank you. I'd like to have a vote on this, a roll call. Lauren, please.
Please state what that is, please.
Is on Joe Thompson's motion to send to the town council a tax-reducing budget of 2% totaling 57068626.
Wait, Mr. Chairman? Question on the motion. Mr. Thompson, did you suggest that that be the one and only?
No, I did not. I would prefer that we go forward with three budgets, but I've been told tonight, we can't do it.
So
So I'm just trying to get everybody to go on record, whether they want to reduce taxes to the North Kingstown citizens that they talked about during the election or not. It's a simple thing.
Well, I never said I was going to reduce taxes, okay? I said I was going to try to, quite frankly, to do, put a cost-effective and efficient, you know, budget together. And that doesn't imply that, you know, that I'm going to reduce taxes. We want to do that, and that's our goal, there's no question about that, okay? But to say that I'm going to cut the budget without knowing what the heck's going to be cut is, quite frankly, not a very good thing to do, or I don't think it's professional as also.
Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Richard Welsh.
No.
Linda Avanzato.
No.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
No.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
No.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Motion fails five to two.
Mr. Cerisi?
Mr. Chairman, I know we're getting close to adjournment time, and I think we have, by state law or by contract, we need to either approve or reject these, the layoff notices that we're required to send out. So I would respectfully ask that we move that agenda right.
Dr. Thornton, would you just, for the new members, would you please explain the process here?
Sure. Just, in the boroughs of Clash, and every year, districts around the state and the country, for that matter, we routinely provide the committee and teachers lists of individuals who historically are least senior in different categories, English, math, history, science, art, who if something did occur budgetarily or in some other difficulty, we would not renew them. So we, if you will, have a large blanket we cover. I believe there are 49 individuals on this list this year, which I would need you to approve. If any of them we had to go there, those folks, we would be looking to
I need a motion to approve this list. Have a second, please. Can I have a comment, please, on that? Yeah, discussion, go ahead.
Okay. My only comment on that is, we, even with your numbers here, are suggesting we're going to lose $3 million of federal revenue, or state revenue, whatever's in this number. Now, if we're losing that, the federal revenue, the potential teachers that are on that list, okay? Is that considered also the fact that if we lose the $3 million of special revenues, that they're on that list as well?
In terms of $3 million, I'm not sure where that was coming from. If memory serves, it's around $886 from our money from last year. But that's not relevant to the teacher layoff list.
Well, again, okay, it's fine. All I'm saying is, what we're saying is, in special revenues, it's, we're down $3 million, okay? There must be some numbers of teachers or somebody associated with that.
Once again, I would say it's not down $3 million to function Yucco and shift The budget numbers you show here show a reduction of $3 million. But we're not I guess I would say, I'm not sure how that's germane to the teacher layoff list.
Well, if there are 100 teachers on, that are funded under that, it's very significant. So my question was, if, are all those teachers included on this list? Or is it just for the appropriated budget, the 500?
All of our teachers, all of our, our whole budget in conversation, all the teachers we would have
So if we lose that revenue, then it won't be a problem. The teachers could be unfortunately discharged.
We have covered every base to cover ourselves.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Can I clarify? This is on a consent agenda. Is this for item 3E only?
Yes.
Yes.
Otherwise?
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
William Mudge.
Most electantly, yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Joe Thompson.
Yes.
Richard Welsh.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Go ahead, Mrs. Page.
Mr. Chairman, post correspondence, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Meaning, let's do correspondence, and then we'll adjourn after correspondence. Motion's been made in second, and we need to vote on the motion, and then we can move ahead with correspondence.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the committee know that before we had, we started here tonight, I received, or I actually made a telephone call to Donna Roth, because Doug was in surgery today. He has come out of surgery and is awake and is doing very well, but they did find more cancer in his body. cancer in his body. They think it's just microscopic. And, um, and they did have to take off his right leg. So, um, so he's recovering pretty well. The good news is, they got the correct leg. We went over there and signed the leg the other day, so that they got the correct one. But it is rather serious, so I'm sure he would appreciate any well wishes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Page. Uh, okay, we have a, a motion in a second?
Before we dismiss, I would like to make a suggest that the school committee send some kind of condolence to Mrs. Kane and Jennifer. I was told on another situation that we didn't even send sympathy cards. So I would like to make a motion that North Kingstown School Committee send condolence to the Kane family.
Okay, we can't make a motion at this time, it's not on the agenda. I think that that's something that we can do. I don't think you need to make a motion, Mrs. Benson.
Okay, well, is it, is it, uh, consent of the people that we will send some acknowledgement to Mr. Kane?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because I've been told this one...
Okay, now let's take the vote on motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit my comments that I didn't get to complete during the meeting, I want to submit it to the secretary.
Go ahead, submit it to the secretary.
Thank you. Are we going to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
Are we going?
Great, all in favor of a motion to adjourn? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned.